Vault to Order, Town of Fairfield, Zoning Board of Appeals. We're going to have our public hearing shortly, but before that, we have working session, executive session, couple things on the agenda. But before I hit that, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows, if you didn't see the multiple signs that are posted throughout the building, number 13 on our continued docket, 309 Hunyadi Avenue has been withdrawn, so there's going to be no business on that matter today. And we have two items that we need to take care of in working session. First is approval of minutes from June 8, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Sorry, Elise. Got you. Any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None, the motion carries. Next, approval of secretary's fees. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Carrie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll reconvene the working session after completion of the public hearing, at which time we'll be voting on all of the matters that go forward today. I think we can start the call. We're close enough to 2 o'clock. Now, I'm going to call to order Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, public hearing of July 12, 2023. When a matter is called, after I make the call, which is on our docket and agenda as was posted, and sometimes there's copies here, but after I make the call, the applicant or his or her agent will present your matter at that time. During your presentation, and only during your presentation, is the time for you to show us anything, bring us anything, distribute anything you want us to take a look at. That's the time, only during that period. After the applicant's done, I'll invite anyone that's interested in the matter to come forward and speak. I first invite those that are in favor, they may have comments in favor of your application, to come forward, and then let them go. Then I invite anyone that opposes it. So if there's someone that is opposition, either here or remotely, they're going to have an opportunity to speak as well. If there's opposition, the applicant or his or her agent has an opportunity to address those comments opposing their application. That is a rebuttal timeframe, so it's not a time to restate your application, it's a time to address the comments and opposition. If there are no opposition, you've already, you're done. You don't get a second bite. So tell us what you want us to hear during your presentation. Don't save anything for rebuttal. The attorneys that are here are no, sometimes there's letters that are submitted, if there's a letter that's submitted in opposition, and I think there's some letters that are submitted in some of the matters here, you can address it during your application, or what I suggest makes more sense is to wait to see if there's opposition. I will allow you, if there's letters that are opposed, I will allow you to oppose it. I'd rather you comment altogether, it's just more efficient, because if there's someone, there might be a letter or two, or emails that come in, and then there might be someone that's going to say something in addition to that. That way, you can address it all at once, and also, you have a little bit of time to collect your thoughts as to what you might want to say. So try to make it as efficient as possible for everyone, especially for Jody, who's taking down things here, and we're going to have our minutes prepared, and I want to make sure the record is clear. All right? As to being, the record being clear, that's why I made some points that I emphasized, is not while I'm making the call, don't try to distribute something, because I don't want to mess up and say something wrong as to what is on the agenda. So it's more to make sure I don't mess up, not for you. Okay? So let's wait, if you have anything to present, you can present it during your application. I will give you enough time, don't worry, I'm not going to rush you. And anyone who does speak, got to come up here and give your name and address. Anyone who's speaking remotely, you're going to give your name and address. Okay? Only one person can speak at a time. All right? So let's just be patient, I will give everyone an opportunity to speak if they want to say something on a particular application. Okay? I want to point out that we're the Zoning Board of Appeals. What we do, for those who don't know, is that we take a look at applications that people who want to, some relief, or want to not bend the rules, but for their particular piece of property, they want to claim that that particular regulation should not apply to that full extent of that piece of property. Okay? We are not talking about traffic, we are not talking about sanitation, we are not talking about noise. We are talking about zoning regulations, how they affect the particular piece of property that you are interested in, whether you're the applicant or whether you're opposing it. All right? So just keep that in mind, because as my rightest chairman, if you go too far off the point, I'll restrict your comments, because we're here for a particular purpose. So just keep that in mind when you're making your comments. Applicants are interested, people on it, whether you're in favor, against it, or just interested. My suggestion is wait until the public hearing is complete, then stay online or here and listen to our discussion. We will be voting on everything that goes forward today. There will be comments. If you're interested, obviously, if you're applicant, you have, you already have an interest in this, but other people might be interested as well, and sometimes the comments and the discussion that the board has, and we invite and open that up. It's not a time for you to talk, it's a time for you to listen to what our comments are. No one can talk in the session other than the people that are sitting at this table. All right? So, but it's important, because you can find out if there's discussion, and you might have some insight as to why we decided a certain way, especially if you're interested in opposing it. You might want to find out why we decided a certain way. If you're interested in your application and there's opposition, you're going to want to find out what our discussion is if the application has been denied. So, but don't worry, there's no penalty if you don't stay. We don't, I don't take attendance, I don't take note that someone left this room. I understand, we all have other obligations, and if you cannot stay, you can find out what happened, but you might not get the full sense of the discussion. You can find out what happened by calling the zoning office tomorrow. If the application for waiver is granted, it's not going to be any good to you as the applicant owner unless it's recorded on land records. So to do that, you need to bring or send a check in the amount of $60 made out to the Town of Fairfield, and bring it or send it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting, this meeting. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's for new dwelling addition or an alteration will require an as-built before there can be an issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance or end or a certificate of occupancy. So now, I'm going to have the public hearing. Our first matter that we have is continued docket number 9, 785 Riverside Drive, map 139, parcel 269, petition of Pierre Menozzi for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sum of two side lines in the street line setbacks from 25 feet and 30 feet, currently 19.8 feet and 29.7 feet, proposing 19.8 feet and 29.7 feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage and total floor area from 20% and 40%, currently 23.2% and 21.7%, proposing 22.1% and 46.3%. Permission to make a dwelling FEMA compliant and construct a new two-floor attic above over existing footprint premises, A-zone.
So my husband Pierre and I are here today to, as you stated, to construct a second-floor addition above with an attic over the existing first floor. The hardship is that it's located in residential A-zone, that requires a minimum lot size. And our lot size, a minimum of 9375, and ours is 5841. But what we are asking for the addition, we have family, my in-laws and his parents to move in, so we needed more space, so we are asking to add that second floor. And the spaces will make it, you know, flood compliant, FEMA compliant, as of right now, the home is not. So there we are.
Okay. All right. And what's your name?
Carrie, C-A-R-R-I-E, M-N-O-Z-I.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Menozzi. Does the board have any questions for Mr. or Mrs. Menozzi? Go ahead.
Hi. I'm looking at your proposed plans. Am I correct? So the first floor plan, there are no changes to be made? You're only going?
No. Right. There's no changes on the first floor, just the second floor going on.
So the first floor has a living room?
And three bedrooms and a kitchen.
Where's the kitchen on the first floor?
It's sort of...
Oh, here, I see this.
Yeah.
So, and then on the second floor?
They'll be, it's actually identical, the footprint will be identical.
At the end of, you're going to have five bedrooms in it?
Yes.
But you live there?
Yes, we live there.
All right, thank you.
With our children.
Any other questions for the Menozzi? Hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application? We started early, was there any indication of any?
No, not at all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Having no other comments in favor other than the applicants, of course, I'm going to close the hearing on 785 Riverside Drive. We'll be taking this up later today.
Thank you very much.
Next item is continued number 13, 309 Hunyadi Avenue. That has been withdrawn. First item that we have is on a general docket, number 1, 87 Oldfield Road, map 182, parcel 197, petition of Mark and Suzanne Potter for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the side and rear setbacks for an accessory structure from 10 feet, currently 4.3 feet and 5.5 feet, proposing 4.3 feet and 5.5 feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 21.82%, proposing 22.01%, and section 6.2, to allow an accessory apartment to be located in a detached structure. Permission to construct a second-floor addition to a detached structure and connect to an accessory apartment, premises A-zone. All right? Go ahead.
Chair, members of the board, good to be before you. Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road, Fairfield field connected, here on behalf of the applicant. For an application that, you know, as a general statement, if I were to take a survey or census of all the applications that I've presented, this board and others, Zoning Board of Appeals, and look for kind of common characteristics of applications that have been approved for variances, I think the two most common would be floodplain, and I know this board is obviously very familiar with it, I think I'm here almost every month with an application that needs a variance because it's located in the floodplain. The issues being obvious with that, that we've seen here before, which is that to make, sometimes on these properties and with these existing structures, to make them FEMA compliant requires you to raise the structure, and it drives the variance, most commonly a building coverage variance, which is the case in this application, for a variance really of 20 square feet to just make it FEMA compliant. And the second common characteristic I probably find is historic buildings and historic properties. And this makes sense, these buildings were constructed before the zoning regulations were ever in place, they weren't built with the contemplation of future setbacks or anything like that, so they just weren't constructed with the regulations there in place. And in addition, there's certain uses for those properties that were contemplated at the time they were built. In this instance, accessory apartments, which is a use that has become more prevalent, more popular around the area, and the regulations have reflected that, the zoning commission adopting regulations to now allow accessory apartments in a wide swath of the town. So those are kind of the two characteristics that commonly drive variances, and in this matter, we have both. This is a property that's located in the floodplain and has a detached garage that is not FEMA compliant, and it also contains historic buildings, both the original house and the detached garage, which was a barn at one point. So just to now zero in on the property itself, so the property is on Oldfield Road, 87 Oldfield Road, it is at the corner of Oldfield Road and Smith Street, we can almost see it from where we are now, and it is located in the residence A-zone, and again, it is also located in a flood zone. It contains a single-family dwelling that you see here, you know, in, what you find with a lot of historic buildings is that they are non-compliant as a setback, as this one is, it is close to the corner there where Oldfield and Smith intersect. And also, what you would find particularly in this area, if you walk down Smith Street, if you walk down Oldfield Road, it has a detached garage. It's a feature that you don't necessarily find a lot in the residence A-zone, particularly as you start heading south towards the water, because of the FEMA regulations, we see a lot of houses there where the garage is on the bottom floor, and then the living units are above, the living area is above. But on this property, historic property, this is, it has a detached garage, and again, if you walk around this area, in the immediate area of this site, you will find a lot of detached garages. And, you know, it's just a common historical feature here for them to be separated from the main dwelling. The other thing I'll just point out about the current conditions in the site, the driveway. So the driveway is located on the very southern end, it's as far away as it can be from Oldfield Road. I'll discuss it later and how I think that's important, but it's as far away as it can be. It is also directly aligned with another driveway, there's another corner property, it's another historic property. It basically has the same exact garage structure as my clients, and they're lined up directly across from each other. So, and I'll show why I think that's important later. So the existing single-family dwelling is in impeccable condition. My client has done a fantastic job maintaining the property and its historic character, really done exhaustive work to maintain it, and I'm sure if you drove by it, you saw the quality of the work in this house. I need their painter, because the paint job on that house is impeccable. So much so with regards to this house, that in 2003, my client received an award of special recognition from the town for the sympathetic preservation of the home, and that was awarded in conjunction with the Historical Society for what they did to improve this property. And again, if you drove by it, you see that even since 2003, they have maintained that. It is still in fantastic condition. My client has taken the same care that they had maintaining this property for decades for this current proposal, to add an accessory apartment to the site while still maintaining the character of the existing dwelling, the property, and the neighborhood. So the proposal itself is to construct a second floor onto the existing detached garage on the exact same footprint that it currently is. So this garage is not, the structure is not getting any closer to any property line, it is going on the exact same foundation, and all that's happening is the second floor is being added to it, and that second floor is proposed to contain an accessory apartment. Accessory apartments are permitted in the zone, so just to be clear on that, there's not a request for a new variance here. Accessory apartments are allowed in many zones in town, including this zone, it is just the fact that it's located in a detached structure instead of being attached to the main dwelling. If you go to like the AAA zone, accessory apartments are allowed in detached structures, but in the A-zone, they are not permitted. So that's the variance that, it's really the thing that's driving the variances here. And again, I think that, you know, that's going to get back to this characteristic of this particular subset area of Residence A where you find detached structures. I was here for the debate on accessory structures, I mean accessory apartments, and the talk about what zones to apply it to, and I know when you drive through the bulk of Residence A, you are not going to find that many detached structures, but in this particular, in this particular area of Residence A, which is not in the historic district, but it's about as close as you can get to the historic district, and obviously, there's a lot of historic buildings in this area, you are going to find a lot of detached structures. And I think that's one of the unique qualities of this site and of this property that warrant the variances. So just to review what the variances, the specific variances are, the first is for a very minor building coverage variance. It's already non-conforming as to building coverage. Again, it's a historic building, a garage, it used to be a horse barn, so it's an existing non-conforming building coverage. We need a variance of approximately 20 square feet to raise the garage, make it FEMA compliant, and then, so it's just for the landing. That's all that the building coverage variance is for. The current garage is almost two feet below the flood elevation, and so this will make it fully compliant. Interestingly, regs allow, if we were to just raise the structure as is and have the landing to it, we wouldn't need a variance, because the existing structure is just being raised, but the pure fact that we're adding a second story to it, so we're changing that dwelling, we talked with staff about that, with the department about it, and, you know, we decided, you know, we'll request the variance for the 20 square feet. You know, it presents an interesting question of if we just raised this initially and put in the landing, and then came back later a few years, if we wouldn't even need a variance at that point. But just to be thorough and make sure we're covered, we're asking for the variance, for the landing. The second variance is to locate the accessory apartment in the detached structure, and the third variance is for setback. Again, we're going to be placing this in the exact same location as the current garage, we are using the same footprint. It's not expanding beyond that at all, so the setback is going to be maintained, but because it's becoming a taller structure, the setback requirements are increased, and that necessitates the variance to basically maintain the existing setbacks. So really not much changing, you know, except raising the height of the garage. The height of the garage is compliant, and again, the use within the garage is compliant, it's just the fact that it's getting raised, and that increases the setback requirements. Just to run through, and we have the architect, Mark Andre, here to, if you have any questions with specific to the design, but you can see here, this is the detached accessory garage, a lot of the features, you know, again, the same care that my client has taken with the development, the design of this property, he is going through all these meticulous details that you see here to maintain that character, the colors, but obviously, some of these little intricate details, I'll show you a couple pictures where you'll see this window is on the main dwelling, and then in the roofline, this little feature here. Other views of it, and again, its height is compliant. These are the existing conditions, this is the existing footprint, it will maintain this exact footprint. Here's how it currently looks as a single-story structure, has three garage bays and then a side door. The proposed plan is for on the first floor, for it to be a two-bay garage, and then have an entrance lobby area into the accessory apartment with an elevator to access the second floor, and on the second floor, a single bedroom, walk-in closet, bathroom, dining, living area, and kitchen. The size of the apartment is compliant with the regulations, it's not too big under the regulations, and these are just further pictures of the details. My client has discussed this application, reviewed it with neighbors, met with all the neighbors, the abutting neighbors, the ones who would be most impacted by this development. So what you see, the ones highlighted in green are all the neighbors that are in support, it's all the abutting neighbors, and I have the petition, there was a couple of emails, but just so you see, just so you believe me. I have the petition signed.
There is a question about that.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, you already have it, tell you something, I never really need it. And then the other neighbors that you don't see on here emailed their support. I copied that too, if you don't believe me on that. So, yeah, as you see in this map, a couple things. First, all the abutting neighbors, anybody would be impacted, particularly the neighbor to the south, directly to the south, and directly to the east, signed in support of this application. And another thing I did was I just highlighted in red all the detached accessory structures that you can see in this little cluster, a lot of historical property or, you know, historic buildings in this area, and what you could see is they're, one, they're all non-conforming as a setback, so similar to this, they're really close to the property line. They're also, particularly around my client's property in 71 Oldfield and 33 Smith, they're clustered together, so they're really only impacting each other, the garages, they're not impacting the main dwellings. The main dwellings are getting some space from these detached structures, so that really reduces the impact of raising this garage. It keeps it out of the field of vision for a lot of these, these single-family dwellings. And, you know, to make it compliant really would end up turning this whole area into a sea of just various structures, basically, you know, just, and it would really make this feel like a much denser area, whereas if you drive by it now, you see these prominent historic buildings along the road, and then there's some space before you get to another structure, another detached garage. And the way they kind of, they're clustered together actually kind of helps with the aesthetics of it and how it looks. And then I have pictures. I went back to pictures because last night I tried to do it on the, I tried to do it on the computer and it failed me, so I learned my lesson. That's the race tried and true, not that it was... So again, I know you all drove by it and you saw the condition of the house, but just that you can see it there in the first photo, and the subsequent photos, just, it's an unbelievably well-maintained home, it's a beautiful home, a beautiful property. You can see some of the features that we're trying to replicate, that ornamental design that you see there. One of the pictures, you can see that window that we're carrying over right here to kind of mirror the principal dwelling. And if you look at, and again, this goes to the kind of conflict with historic buildings and the regulations. If you look at this building in these, in these pictures, if you were to attach this, one, we're at the limit of building coverage already, so we can't expand building footprint beyond what's here, but even if you knock this down and you attached it, you know, there's this, the beautiful front here, and then over here, the porch over here, so to attach it here doesn't really work, and then you can't attach it here, there's no room over here, so it really would be just back here, and again, it would ruin the character of this neighborhood, it's not what you see here, you don't see attached garages for these historic buildings that are right here on Oldfield Road. So we just feel it's running into conflict with the regulations and what we're proposing here, running into conflict, and that's why it is more appropriate to locate it in the detached garage. The, there's pictures here of the garage, there's also a shot that you see here of the two driveways opposite each other. I think this is another issue with moving this, like if we were to move this structure to be compliant with setbacks, and we would shift this driveway down, one, it wouldn't line up against that other driveway, but two... line up against that other driveway, but two, it's just pushing it closer to Oldfield Road in this intersection. We're trying to stay as far away from that as possible. And again, it's just going to clutter, it would clutter this property. Whereas where it currently is proposed, that's where it's been, it's on the exact same footprint, nothing's changing, no setbacks are getting reduced even further, it's just going up, which the height is compliant, it's just the setbacks. And then I also gave you some pictures, just so you could see our neighbor's garage, which is also nonconforming, and there's a couple of other pictures of neighbors who, and you can see their detached garages and how they're all right on the property line, or very close to the property line. That's just how it is in this neighborhood. And the final picture actually shows a detached garage with a upper story, just like we're proposing. Again, nonconforming as the setback. So just to recap, hardship is driven, particularly building coverage variance is driven by its location in the floodplain. We have to raise the structure, make it FEMA compliant to get to the entrance, we have to build a landing. It's only 20 square feet, that's all that that variance is for. It's an increase of 20 square feet in coverage, which we would be able to do if it was just staying as the existing structure, but because we're adding a second floor, we're required to get the coverage variance. The second variance, the hardship, is again, this battle between historic structures and the regulations. This is a use, it's allowed, it's supported by the town. There's been a big push for accessory apartments. The commission devoted, the planning and zoning commission developed a lot of time to developing that accessory apartment regulation and allowing accessory apartments. I just think in this particular situation with this property, it's very unique in the setup. Do not see a lot of detached structures in the Residence A zone, but you do in this area. They were fine with it in other zones where you do find a lot of detached accessory structures. So in your A zones, your R3, where you found those, the commission was completely comfortable with it. So we think we have a hardship there with the historic character and the layout of the neighborhood and these properties. I showed you a petition with regard to the setback. I showed you a petition of the surrounding neighbors, the most impacted neighbors, who are all in favor of this. Honestly, I don't know if they would sign a petition in support if we had to move this structure this way, because it just gets more in the way. It looks much more cluttered on this site. This is tucked into the corner, there's a garage here, and then there's another garage here. So the only things being impacted are other detached accessory structures. And again, that argument about the driveway, the driveway is currently lined up right across from the other driveway. It's as far away from Oldfield in that intersection that you could get, that's a busy section of road, so I think it's good that this driveway is about as far away as it can be from Oldfield Road. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions. One thing I will, sorry, one thing I will add on top of that is that we are compliant with the floor area on the site. So we are not asking for additional floor area that we're not entitled to. We don't need a variance for that. It's just a building coverage variance, but this, but we're not asking for more building than what we're allowed here.
Thank you, Attorney Russo. Board have any questions? For you, Jane?
Hi. Are you building on the existing foundation?
Yes, of the garage, yes.
So the foundation is going to stay in the same place?
The, we're staying in the same footprint, right, Mark? We're staying in the same, that footprint?
Should we find it?
Yeah, just identify yourself.
My name is Marc Andre. I'm the architect for this project. We haven't done any structural design yet. Should we find the foundation deficient, then we construct the foundation. But currently, the plan is to build it exactly on top of the existing.
So if you find that the foundation isn't good and you have to build a new foundation, could you or would you pull it in so you get that 10-foot?
I think we made the argument it's probably not appropriate to pull the structure back.
Even the 10 feet to make it?
Yes, correct.
Just a little bit?
Correct. Because if you drove by the site, I think, you know, see, if you've been just shifting it over slightly, it really reduces this yard, it reduces the open space that you see, and it gets closer to where the single-family is here, it gets more in their field of vision. And again, there's a garage right here, I think it's actually closer to the line than ours. There's a picture of it in my set. So they're right up against it, and then there's another garage here. So it's in this kind of cluster of detached garages, which have, you know, been around for a very long time.
And then, and you've confirmed that you can get all the parking that you need off the street?
Yes, yes, for both the accessory apartments, yeah, we're fully compliant as to parking, yes.
That's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Russo or Mr. Andre? Hearing no other questions? Or anyone wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? 87 Oldfield Road. I'm hearing nothing. We're going to close the hearing. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item that we have is number two, it's 81 Hylon Road, map 77 parcel 616, petition of David Meslier for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase the total lot coverage to 20%. Currently, 22.34%. Proposing 22.32%. Permission to construct a 12-foot by 18-foot shed premises A zone. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is David Meslier. I'm the property owner of 81 Hylon Road, and I am here today because I wanted to construct a 12-by-18 storage shed in my backyard. I had the survey done. The survey shows that there was above-the-ground pool and deck that had been removed. And I thought this would be a wash pretty much in terms of lot coverage with the new shed proposed. When I went to the zoning, to visit Matt, I was told that the pool and the deck had no permit back then. So this is why I'm here today, to ask for an increase of the lot coverage from 20% to 22.32% to allow the shed.
All right, thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Meslier?
Can you please tell us what your hardship is?
The hardship is that the, like I just said, the survey I just had done showed that the pool, above-the-ground pool and the deck was taken down, taken down. And I thought that putting the shed would be pretty much, you know, equal wash in terms of the lot coverage, square footage. But again, when I went to visit Matt, it turns out that the pool and the deck had no permit back then. So the so-called 22.34% lot coverage was actually wrong since the pool and the deck had no permit back then. So that's why I'm asking for the variance to increase the lot coverage to accommodate the shed.
All right, thank you.
Did you have a question, Mark? More from Matt. Is that blue, is that bluestone patio still there?
Blue in the back?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it the eight inches in height that makes it count as coverage if it was in grade, 12 inches required? Okay, so that doesn't count as coverage now? That's eight, okay. I was going to say if you added four inches of soil, would we alleviate this problem? That's it, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Meslier? All right, hearing no other questions? Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to this application? 81 Hylon Road. Hearing no comment? Thank you, sir. You're taking that up shortly, closing the hearing on that. Our next item that we have is 50 Exchange Place, map 40 parcel 427, petition of Herbert, M., and Lillian C. Valiz for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet, currently 14.6 feet, proposing 14.6 feet. Permission to create a separate building lot and allow the existing home to remain. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Russo and Rizzio, with offices at 10 Saskatoon Hill Road. I'm here this afternoon representing Herbert and Lillian Valiz, owners of property at 50 Exchange Place. Property in question contains a single-family home located at the corner of Deerfield Street and Exchange Place. This property is located in the Residence B zone. The Residence B zone has a minimum lot area requirement of 6,000 square feet for a single-family home. This property contains more than twice that, 14,624 square feet. The intent of the applicant, since the property is significantly oversized, is to divide the property into two conforming, single-family lots. The existing home will be located on proposed Lot A, will contain 6,732 square feet in excess of the Residence B minimum lot area requirement of 6,000 square feet. Proposed Lot B will contain 7,032 square feet in excess of the Residence B minimum lot area requirement of 6,000 square feet. To accomplish this, the applicant's requesting a variance of section 5.2.4 of the zoning regulations to permit a reduction in the rear property line setback from 20 feet, presently 14.6 feet, to 14.6 feet for the existing, single-family home. There is no variance requested of any sort for proposed Lot B, and the only variance requested for Lot A is a rear property line setback at the existing dimension. There's no minimum lot area variance, no lot square variance, no lot frontage variance. The test for the granting of a variance is set forth in the Smith case, 174 Connecticut 326, a 1978 case, which states regarding hardship, under general statute, section 8-6, parents, 3N parents, local zoning burden may grant a variance where two basic conditions are met. One, the variance is shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan, and two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulation is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan, end quote. First part of the test, no substantial effect on the comprehensive zoning plan is satisfied here where the proposed uses, single-family homes, are permitted uses in the Residence B zone. Second part of the test, adherence to the strict letter of the regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the purpose of the zoning plan is satisfied here. I would submit by several factors. The primary factor for the board to consider is the fact that the variance request, if approved, will not result in any physical change to what is in existence today at 50 Exchange Place. To explain, the single-family home, existing, single-family home on the property was constructed for the town's assessors' records in 1916. The zoning regulations were adopted in August of 1925. As such, the construction and location of the home preceded the enactment of the zoning regulations, and this location is protected as legally nonconforming. The setback to the existing house to the north is 14.6 feet. That satisfies the Residence B side yard setback of five feet. Since the property is located on a corner, the owner is permitted, for zoning purposes, to designate one property line as a side property line and the other property line as a rear property line. This property utilizes at present the northerly property line as the side yard setback, because then both the side and rear setbacks would conform to zoning. To accomplish the proposed division of the property, the present side yard must become the rear setback, and the present rear setback must become the side setback. The proposed side setback will be 9.9 feet behind the house, if you will, which conforms to the Residence B requirement of five feet. The present side yard setback of 14.6 feet to the house on the right becomes the rear setback, which requires the variance request before the board, because the rear setback requirement is 20 feet. The critical element the board to consider in evaluating this variance request is that it is essentially a technical or a paper variance. There is no change in the location or the footprint of the existing home. The existing home is 14.6 feet from the neighbor to the north and will continue to be 14.6 feet from the neighbor to the north. The only thing that is changing is the technical designation of the existing northerly setback from a side setback to a rear setback. Should be noted, there is no overbuilding on proposed Lot A. Lot coverage ratio is 8.9%. Lot coverage of 30% is permitted in the Residence B zone. Similarly, the proposed floor area is 26%, and a floor area ratio as 50% is permitted in the Residence B zone. The approval of this technical variance request permits the redesignation, if you will, of the side yard variance into a rear yard variance. Nothing changes on the ground. The present house, constructed in 1916 and legally protected, remains as is, and there is no increase or different impact on the neighbor because the house and its locations stay the same. My client has attempted to contact the occupants at the property to the north several times unsuccessfully. Mr. Valiz is here with me. It's his understanding that the property is a rental, the property owner received notice, and we have received no response or comment. Again, there's no impact on that neighbor at all. The house stays as is. For the reasons I've outlined, I'd request this variance application to be approved. This is an unusual set of circumstances where the variance, if approved, results in no physical change in construction on the affected property. Mr. Valiz is here with me. He and I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Board have any questions? Jane?
Will the street address of the existing house have to change?
No.
And, but there'll be a new number assigned?
To the, to the property? Yes.
Okay. And the house number now is on what, now the front elevation, the front yard?
Right.
But when it twists and varies?
That is still the street setback. That is still the street, and the address will remain the same.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The street that, you know, that is the front, that doesn't change. What changes is the side and rear.
What you're calling that?
They just swap.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing no other questions? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? 50 Exchange Place. All right, close the hearing. Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Next item that we have is number four. And this is 157 Fern Street, map 139 parcel 164, petition of Matthew S. Grandy for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase the lot coverage and total floor area from 20% to 40% currently, 19.98% and 39.98%, proposing 22.9% and 42.5%. Permission to construct a one-story addition with landing and stairs, premises A zone. Attorney Fallon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm an attorney in Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm pleased to be representing the applicant and property owner, Matt Grandy. Matt is seated right here with me. Also with me to my left is our architect, Edmund Clemente. Did you have any specific questions with regard to the architectural design? Property is located 157 Fern Street, where Matt resides with his fiancee and three young children. I put in my material, when I wrote this, they were imminently expecting their fourth child, well, that fourth child arrived on Father's Day, so congratulations to the Grandys. But we now have four children, which does have impact with regard to the purpose and intent of this application. We seek variance of section 5.2.5 to increase the existing lot coverage from 19.98% to 22.9%, and the total floor area from 39.98% to 42.5%. As you can see from the plans submitted and prepared- As you can see from the plans submitted and prepared by Mr. Clemente, we do this for permission to construct what I think is a modest addition to their home as shown on the architectural plans that you have. The purpose is obviously to address the significant needs of this growing family for a modest amount of additional living space. Since moving to Fairfield to raise their family, they've come to love both the town and their Fern Street neighborhood. They very much wish and desire to remain in their home, in their neighborhood, if at all possible, and this addition will allow them to do so, providing some adequate additional space for their family needs. The two-story addition will allow for an expansion of the kitchen and living area on the first floor, as you can see from the plans. Although not really involved in the variance, the second floor proposes a balcony with a roof proposed, an open balcony with a roof proposed. The inclusion of the balcony was made to ensure that the proposed addition would be aesthetically pleasing and in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. It has, in fact, been very well received by our neighbors, as I will elaborate on in a minute, and so it's purely aesthetic. What is driving the coverage and FAR request is the addition to the first floor. The crucial thing here is the property itself, as it should often be before the board. The property is located in the residence A district, as you are aware. The A district contemplates a lot area of 9,375 square feet. This lot, the Grandy's lot, is only 8,348 square feet, or some 1,027 square feet less than what the zone contemplates. And as I'll discuss in a minute, that's significant with regard to the variances request and the case law. With regard to the law, Connecticut General Statute 8-6 requires that you make confinings. One, that what is being proposed will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and that, number two, there are facts with regard to the property and the factors involving in the application that do constitute unusual hardship as defined by our case law. With regard to the first part of the test, it has been held, and I cite to you often the Egan case, that if the use to be allowed by a variance is consistent with other uses in the area and/or is a permitted use in the zone, then the first part of the test is met. Here, the granting of the variance will not change the use of the property, which will remain as a single-family residence as explicitly permitted in the zone. Other than the modest variances that we request for coverage and total floor area, no other variances are sought, and the proposed addition will comply with all other technical requirements of the regulations. Finally, the proposal, the proposed addition, as designed by Ed Clemente, is attractive, harmonizes with the character of the neighborhood, and represents a significant aesthetic enhancement for the property benefiting the surrounding area. And in this regard, our abutting neighbors concur, and we have petitions signed by all of our abutting neighbors, as shown on the survey, who Matt reviewed the plans with and who were quite comfortable signing the petition. Now, with regard to hardship, as I said, this is a classic hardship situation in that the law is well settled that what is the controlling legal fact here is that the lot in question is a valid and legally protected pre-existing, non-conforming lot with regard to lot area, being 8,348 square feet rather than 9,375. As you know, the Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-F2, provides that a lot is a valid legal protect, is a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming lot and entitled to protection under the statute in that circumstance. What the cases I cite say is that when you have a situation like that, and nonetheless, notwithstanding the legally protected status of the property, the 20% coverage and the 40% FAR requirement are calculated based upon a lot area, in this case, over 1,000 square feet less than the minimum required in the zone, that establishes a hardship basis for granting of a variance with regard to coverage at FAR. Notwithstanding the significant nonconformity of the lot, the Grandys were careful to try to maintain proper balance so that the coverage variance here is relatively minor. I believe it's 2.9% as is the FAR variance. But the law and the cases I cite at page three of my material establish that in this situation, because of the non-conforming protected status of the lot as the lot area, a proper hardship basis is found for the granting of the variances that we request. So, in summary, and subject to answering any questions you might have from me or Matt or Mr. Clemente, we worked very hard to create an addition here that will be attractive in design and harmonizing with the character of the neighborhood. Our neighbors concur on that. From a personal standpoint, it will provide the Grandys and their growing family with a modest amount of additional living area to address the needs of their family and allow them to stay in this house and this neighborhood that they very much love and want to do. From your perspective, the important thing here is that the standards of Connecticut General Statute 8-6 are complied with, and especially that legal hardship is established based upon the analysis that I've made and the fact that the lot in question is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot with respect to the current lot area requirements. So, we appreciate your consideration and attention to the application, and we would be pleased to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board have any questions? Jane?
Okay. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm looking at Connecticut website, 8-6. It talks about unusual hardship.
Correct.
And unusual hardship means that this property is different than all the properties around it.
Doesn't mean that it's different than all the property around it. It means that it has unique characteristics relative to the properties around it. And this board, I think, has previously recognized the case law that I do cite that relates to the fact that when you have a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming lot with respect to lot area, as is the case here, that proper hardship basis is established for the variances that we're requesting, coverage and FAR, because the application of those regulations, which contemplate a larger-sized lot, do have an adverse impact on the legally protected status of the pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
So?
And that's what those cases say.
Okay. So, the, all the rest of the properties nearby, adjacent, conforming to the lot size?
I can't tell you that. My experience of over 40 years is that some would be and many, and some would not.
Okay.
It depends when the lots were developed.
Okay, I'm just, I, okay, I don't think there's a hardship, but that's because I'm reading it from right here.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that, first of all, I don't think that's consistent with the cases, I don't know what you're reading from, but the cases that I've cited to you analyze this situation in the context of hardship. Number two, and although you have to decide each case on an individual basis, I think the law, the board has, you know, I'm here every month, you're here every month, which respects your volunteer service, but the law, the board has consistently recognized that the situation that I present to you today does establish a hardship basis for the granting of a coverage and FAR variance provided, provided the first part of the test is satisfied and that the coverage request or the FAR request is not so extravagant as to implicate, you know, the character of the neighborhood. And in this case, it isn't. The house is very much consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and the neighbors have spoken in support.
Yeah, I read you when I'm reading right from the state website.
Well, what is the website?
CGA.CT.gov.
Okay.
Grounds for granting a variance. The Supreme Court has held that when the ZVA grants a variance on grounds that apply to many other properties in a given area, it effectively establishes a new zoning order and applicable to that area which exceeds the ZVA's authority.
Right. I don't think, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. I don't think that's the situation we have here. I don't think there's, there's any indication other than the fact that this lot, as I've said, based upon the case law I've cited, is a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, and in this case, the application of these regulations to a lot with that protection constitutes hardship. It will be a fairly revolutionary change, which, for this board, to reject that authority because that authority has, I think, been consistently accepted in the past under similar sort of situations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. No further questions. Is there anyone who speaks in favor of the application? Is anyone in opposition to the application? 157 Fern Street. Hearing nothing. I'm going to close the hearing on 157 Fern Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item that we have is number five, and that is 729 Reef Road, map 183, parcel 115. Petition to Mole Rental LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback on a corner lot from 17 feet, currently 16.3 feet, proposing 16.3 feet, permission to construct a second-floor addition with attic over existing first-floor premises B zone. Go ahead, sir.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, I am the owner of the property 729 Reef Road. It is an existing, non-conforming property, which we just heard about. The good news with mine, I guess, is that we comply with all other setbacks, floor area ratio, lot coverage, actually, we're under on most of them. There's the one issue here is the house was built seven inches too close to Sandy Lane back in 1958 when it was construction. So, we're really, this is a seven-inch setback issue on one street back line.
Just give us your name. I know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought I said, yeah, Ian Cardamas.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cardamas.
And I do have the petition, so I have the original, which I would, clerk? Thank you so much. So, most of these, there's tons of rentals on the street. There was a couple of homeowners who were in opposition. They had no interest in signing it. They were more concerned about traffic on Reef Road, high property taxes, congestion in downtown Fairfield. Everything had nothing to do with the application. But we spoke to them. They were not interested in any of it. I don't think they really understood it was a seven-inch, you know, they were just more worried about the expansion of the property. I did explain that, look, you know, if the house came down, it would be substantially larger because we're really undersized on the lot. But unfortunately, because of that two-street setback on a corner, you kind of get two-street setbacks, which, which is kind of detrimental sometimes in this situation it was because there's plenty of property on the left side, so literally the house could slide over. But why they built it that way in 1958, I don't know.
Mr. Cardamas, there are a couple emails that came in, opposition, so let's just wait and see if they speak as well.
Yep.
And then I'll give you opportunity to address that if you choose to. You've started to touch on it now, but do it all at once if they do speak.
Great.
But, you know, I'm not going to cut you off if you want to say, oh, I forgot to mention this about the opposition. All right. Let's first see if there's any questions for you. Any questions, Mr. Cardamas? Jane, go ahead.
How many bedrooms are in the house now?
Three.
And at the end of the project, you're going to have?
Five.
Five or six?
It could be either way. I think it shows five. One could be six.
And know that no more than four unrelated people can live in the house?
Yeah.
So, it's, thank you.
Yeah, and just, I mean, just to add quickly, I mean, I do own the property directly across the street too, and I did say to the neighbors, look, if this was detrimental to real estate values, clearly I'd be hurting myself as well. So, I mean, as a lifelong resident, property owner, I mean, typically, you know, I wouldn't do anything that I thought would hurt a neighborhood when I'm, obviously, it's my home and an investor as well, so just, you know, just to add that.
So, you live across the street?
No, I don't.
Oh.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor. Is anyone in favor of the application? 729 Reef? All right, is there anyone in opposition that needs to speak? 729 Reef? Is anyone online, Matt?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
They would put their hand up if they were.
Yeah. Who is Julia?
That's a good question.
I, I know who the Abers are because they're next.
They're next.
Hold on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Matt's fiancee. Sorry for the confusion. I'm on 157 Fern.
Oh, perfect. You could have spoken up, you know.
No, I'm just trying.
I don't think.
I'm raising my hand. I'm looking at a train.
I told me to scare people when I give my announcement. Trying to make it, trying to make it.
Oh, I thought he was just fearful for speaking over.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, no voicing, Mr. Cardamas, you touched on it. Is there anything you want to add relative to the emails that, from Sandy Way, the two people from Sandy Way?
Yeah, just, I did see them. Like I said, I, we spoke to them. I know they were not, you know, thrilled with this, but I don't think they realize that, you know, not granting the waiver doesn't protect the property from being bigger. I think everybody wants to see the small grandma's Cape house stay in Fairfield forever, but it's unfortunate that's not the case. So, I think if, you know, and I tried to explain, if we didn't get the seven-inch waiver, what would be here would just be bigger and probably, you know, would use all the lot coverage we could and all the floor area ratio. So, this was the better of the two scenarios, and I just don't think they understood that. Like even the emails, you know, they touch on congestion, traffic, you know, everything that has nothing to do with the seven-inch setback. So, you know, like I said, I wasn't there to cure all Fairfield's problems that day. I just said, look, we're here for a seven-inch setback issue, and that was it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Cardamas. I just wanted to make sure, any other opposition? Okay, good. All right. I'm going to close the hearing on 729 Reef Road. Thanks, sir. Final item that we have is number six, that's 399 South Benson Road, map 139, parcel 218. Petition of Lauren John Aber for variance of zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback on a corner lot from 30 feet, currently 11.11 feet, proposing 24.4 feet, permission to construct a dormer in an attic, premises A zone. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you. Just make sure you speak loud, just so it comes through.
Okay, great. I'm Laura Aber. I live at 399 South Benson. My husband and I have lived there about four years, and this is our third time presenting in front of the board for rent variances and work that we've done to our older home. So, we are looking to construct a dormer on the third floor to make that a primary bedroom and bathroom. Our house is quite small. It's only 140 square feet for a family of four, so we need a little bit more breathing room. Our hardship is that our house was built in 1904, so before there were zoning laws. We're not looking to expand any lot coverage. We're just looking to move some spaces to the third-floor attic, and we have signatures from all of our neighbors as well as sent to Matt.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Aber. The board have any questions for Ms. Aber? All right, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor? I know you had the petitions, but you also had an email that came in from Jane Taylor and Douglas Fry in support as well. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone in opposition to 399 South Benson Road? Well, we know it's not Julia or Duke. So, no opposition. I'm going to close the hearing on 399 South Benson Road. Thank you, Ms. Aber. The public hearing is now closed. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene voting, working session at that time.
Ready and set.
All right. Mr. Chairman. Call back to order, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, July 12, 2023. We have several matters to take up for consideration. The first is from our continued docket, number nine, 785 Riverside Drive. Carrie Menosi and her husband presented the application to construct second-floor with attic above over existing footprint. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Right. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, please. Discussion?
Think it's a nice design. I don't think it's entirely out of line, staying on the footprint, going vertical.
Even though it's way over FAR, it still doesn't detract from the streetscape.
Yeah, the upper part of Riverside has been, has some problems.
In other words, it could be a lot worse. In other words, it could be a lot worse.
All right. Bring it up, Elise.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Approved, granted. Number thirteen on there, continued, 309 Hignyade Avenue, that's with withdrawn. Our first matter on the general docket, 87 Oldfield Road, Attorney Russo presented this. We also heard from Mr. Andre comments on its architect. This is to construct second-floor addition to detached garage accessory apartment. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All right. Discussion?
Think that although we don't consider precedent on this board, it addresses, I think counsel addressed the safety concern with not moving that driveway forward towards the, the intersecting street. And from the look of it, I have to agree that those three garages being kind of set the way they are just kind of burying each other. And I think to ask them to move that would kind of screw up the sightline of the, of the area.
I'm happy it's remaining detached, because, yeah, goes to part of the neighborhood style.
It's consistent. Yeah. Bring it to a vote, Elise?
Yes.
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 Yes. And granted. Number two, 81 High Lawn Road, Mr. Miss Leah presented his own application to, for detached shed. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion?
I asked very specifically if there was a hardship, and I didn't hear a legal hardship, so I can't really endorse this application.
Unfortunately, the gentleman assumed that the predecessor did the right thing and got the zoning variance that they needed to do, which he would have had the variance to remove that and put a shed.
Which would have been a reduction, but they're basically zoning from nothing.
I don't, I don't think that it's a, I don't think it's an out-of-line request. I don't think that there's any detraction necessarily from the, from the neighborhood. There was no vocal or otherwise opposition. I don't think it's that big of a deal.
It's not, it's not that great a difference.
It's not. It's reasonable. It's small.
I'm just wondering what size shed it could be to keep it within twenty percent. It doesn't have to be as big as it does. Any tip?
Good vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a no.
Yes. Yes. That passes. Number three, 50 Exchange Place, and Attorney Fitzpatrick presented this for delicious, and is to create a separate building lot and allow existing home to remain. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
You? Discussion?
Based on the fact that absolutely nothing is changing, other than the designation, like counsel said, it's a, it's an on-paper variance. I see no harm in passing it.
And both lots are compliant.
Compliant, yeah.
Bring it to a vote, Elise?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Number four, 157 Fern Street, Attorney Fallon presented this, Mr. Grande, to construct one-story addition, landing in stairs. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion?
Um, I wanted, I brought up what I read on the state government website, that it has to be an unusual hardship, and there's nothing unusual about this property compared to all the other properties around it. They're all too small for the zone, and there's nothing that makes this stand out. So, you know, people just want what they want, but it doesn't make it a hardship. So, I'm not big with this.
We consistently, as a board, reference the size of the lot relative to the allowable size of the lot in the area. I mean, on probably over eighty percent of the things that we do, and the term unusual has never either deterred us from approval or, it really hasn't come up until right now. And in my consideration, I think that based on the size of the lot versus the allowable size of the lot, it's more, it's a reasonable request. It's not going to add anything or detract from the site of the street. It's tucked away nicely. They put the roof on it in consideration for consistency with the current architectural style. I think they've done enough.
We're over a thousand feet under the required...
And show on all the other neighbors' properties. What makes this peculiar, you know, a particular hardship with this lot?
When you, oh, when you design property originally, and then the zone all of a sudden says ninety-three, seventy-five is what you need...
Right.
That, that creates a hardship in and of itself.
But how is this an unusual hardship?
It's not unusual, it's unique to the area. And we got to, if we want to do that, we got to talk about just not only the neighborhood, but all resident A zones, and how they've changed. Personally, I lived in a house that was not in R3, and it changed. And I, I didn't, and all of them changed, and I'm just like everyone else. I wasn't unusual for my neighborhood, but I clearly have a hardship. And this board, before I was on, had found twice that I had a hardship because my lot is undersized.
All right. Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes. Number five, 729 Reef Road, petition of Moe Rental LLC. Mr. Cardamas presented this, he's a member of that LLC. It is to construct second-floor addition with attic over first floor, and entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Thank you, Elise. All right. Remember, this is a corner lot with Sandy Way, the little cul-de-sac off of Reef Road. And we had two people that sent emails, Mr. Cardamas responded to that. Discussion?
The, the people who sent the emails, their biggest concern was about tenants, and we can't, we're not permitted to make a...
What?
A decision based on who might live there.
Yeah. That would be a problem.
I just wanted to say that for the record.
Yeah.
However, if the neighbors are paying attention and see more than four unrelated people living in the house, they may, you know, more than four is, five, okay, five or more, they may drop a dime. Just putting that out there.
Bring it to a vote, Elise?
Yes.
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 And number six, 399 South Benson Road, the Abers, Mrs. Aber presented their application, construct a dormer in the attic area, corner lot with Clinton Street. Entertained a motion to approve?
Brian moves.
Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion?
I get to use my favorite word, that I stole, de minimis. De minimis? One word. De minimis is one word.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.